So my clock now says nine o'clock. I see we have about six people in addition to the ODO staff. So I think I'll wait one more minute to see if we have a few more people join us and then we'll get started. So thank you for joining us and we'll begin shortly. Okay, we still have a few more people joining, so I'm gonna wait just a few more seconds before we start. Okay, it's 9:02, so I think I will begin. So, good morning, my name is Wendy Simons with the Oregon Department of Energy, and I am a rules-making coordinator at ODO and the hearing officer for today. Just a few words about how this hearing will be, kind of the sequence of events, how it will be organized. So I'll start with a few introductory remarks and after that, my colleague Rob Del Mar will give a brief overview of the program. Then I will say a few words about the draft rules. And then after a few formalities and remarks about how the rulemaking process will work and the various deadlines, et cetera, we will open up the floor for comments. So, again, good morning, my name is Wendy Simons with the Oregon Department of Energy, and I am the hearing officer for today. And on behalf of my colleagues, I'd like to thank everybody for attending and participating in the hearing. This hearing is being recorded to maintain a permanent record. Today is January 26, 2022, the time is approximately 9:03 AM. The public hearing is being held online and all attendees are participating remotely. So materials for the hearing, including the draft rules, are located on the ODO website. So oregon.gov/energy. And then if you follow these tabs in order, there's the Get Involved tab and Rule Making, then the Community Renewable Energy Grant Program, and this is a rulemaking for program establishment. So, Rob, could you move to the next slide and we'll say a few words about using WebEx? Or, oh, sorry, first we have our statement for the Oregon Department of Energy. For those of you who might be new to working with ODO, we've got our department mission here and a brief synopsis of what we do and our main functions. So the Oregon Department of Energy helps Oregonians make informed decisions and maintain a resilient and affordable energy system. We advance solutions to shape an equitable, clean energy transition, protect the environment and public health, and responsibly balance energy needs and impacts for current and future generations. So, next slide please, Rob. So this is an overview of some of the functions in WebEx and a few things in particular to point out along the bottom. I think everybody, except maybe a few of the panelists and myself at this point, are unmute. Stacy Heberger is our host, she has the ability to mute and unmute people. So when we get to the comment portion and also if people have questions at the end, you can raise your hand and see if I can, yes. There's some information down at the bottom under Reactions where you can raise your hand. And you can also use the chat function to communicate with us. And just a one brief tip, make sure that you're sending your chat to, either to everyone or if it's specifically about issues with your connectivity or wanting to give a comment, you could send it to the panelists or to the host and then she will know to unmute you. And another tip, on that mute button, if you are unmuted, it will display in a green color. We know sometimes people don't catch that and they might be talking in things that they didn't intend for everybody or didn't realize that they were still not unmuted. So if it's green, then you're unmuted and you can be heard by everybody else. The lists of participants are over on the right as well as attendees. At some point, I was planning to ask everybody to please use the chat to just say who you are and who you are working with or who you're affiliated with, just to identify yourself for the record, because we do keep a record. I know we've got a long list of people, I'm right now I'm seeing 28 attendees. So it would be great for people to identify yourself in the chat and that will help us and help each other and help us with record-keeping. So I'm looking to see if there's anything else to make sure to tell everybody, but I think those are the main points. So, Rob, if you want to go ahead and flip to the next slide, that might be the beginning of your slides of your overview. Yes, so at this point, my colleague, Rob Del Mar, I'll hand it over to him and he'll give a program overview.
Thanks Wendy, I'm Rob Del Mar and I'm a Senior Policy Analyst with Oregon Department of Energy. And I'm gonna go through a few slides for a quick overview of the program. I think that for the attendees of this meeting, if you've already read through the rules, you're probably pretty familiar with this, but we wanted to provide a little bit of background. So, right out of the bill, House Bill 2021, we get sort of the purpose of the program. And the purpose, as stated in the bill, is to offset costs of planning and developing community renewable energy projects, support projects in traditionally underserved communities, promote small-scale community renewable energy projects, and in this case, small scale means less than 20 megawatts. And finally, provide direct benefits to communities across Oregon by improving energy resilience, creating local jobs, promoting economic development, and offsetting local energy costs. This program is a little different from previous programs that we've run here at ODO. And one of the differences is that this program is only open to public bodies. So, in order to apply for the program, you have to be one of the entities on this list, tribes, counties, municipalities, special government bodies such as ports and irrigation districts, and also the public universities, consumer-owned utilities. And the bill has a provision that it's not available in cities greater than 500,000 people. And so it's not available in Portland. And that was essentially a nod to the Portland Clean Energy Fund, which is able to provide funding for similar types of projects within Portland. And so the idea is to take the funds for this program and really spread them around the state and focus more on the rural areas. There's two budget carve-outs within the bill. And 50% or more of the grants have to be awarded for projects that are serving qualifying communities. And 50% or more have to be for projects that are energy resilience projects. And so the energy resilience projects would include a renewable energy generation system such as solar, but also include some sort of backup storage component like batteries so that it could provide services within the community in the event of a power outage. Qualifying communities have a definition within the bill and within our rules. And this is how they are described in the bill. Communities of color, communities experiencing lower incomes, tribal, rural, and coastal communities, communities with limited infrastructure, and communities traditionally underrepresented in public process and adversely harmed by environmental and health hazards. And this includes seniors, youths, persons with disabilities. So as you can see, it's a fairly broad list for what is a qualifying community. And a lot of communities will presumably be able to check several of these boxes within their, as they describe, the communities being served. And that will help them to qualify for that budget carve-out and also for some priority scoring, which is described in the rules and in the bill. The rules that we've all read leading up to today were put together by ODO staff with a lot of help from an advisory committee. And the advisory committee was described in House Bill 2021. And we spent most of last summer recruiting members and we ended up with a really great list of folks to help us with this. We have representatives from tribes, from utilities, cities, counties, representatives from environmental justice organizations. I won't go through the entire list now, but we did have a lot of help from some very qualified folks. And we'd like to, once again, say thank you to our advisory committee members for all of the help in developing these draft rules. The timeline for the program started late summer, early fall last year, where we recruited our advisory committee and we started to work on program design. And from September, really through now, we've been working on the program rules. And from now until March, we're gonna also be doing community outreach and continuing to add staff within the Department of Energy to administer the program. And in March, that's when we're gonna officially launch the program by issuing opportunity announcements. The opportunity announcements will be for four different categories of grants. Two of the categories are for planning grants, planning energy resilience projects, and planning renewable energy-only projects. Those grants are up to $100,000 and can cover up to 100% of project cost. And we will also have two categories of construction grants. Energy resilience grants can get awards up to $1 million, covering up to 100% of project cost. And construction grants for renewable energy systems only with no resilience components, also up to $1 million, but limited to 50% of project cost. And grants will be rewarded, awarded on a competitive basis and will include performance agreements and time limits for completing the projects. This is a graphic version of a kind of simplified flow through the program. And so this is what the application process will look like. This is described within the rules, but we wanted to go through briefly the process. So it will start with an opportunity announcement. That opportunity announcement will lead to applications being submitted to the department. We will complete an eligibility review, where we're verifying that the applicant is an eligible applicant, one of the public bodies, and also that they have submitted a project with an eligible technology, has to be renewable energy and energy resilience technologies. Once we confirm eligibility, the applications will go through a competitive review. And that will lead us to being able to announce the awards for that particular set of opportunity announcements. And those projects that get an award will then enter into a performance agreement with the Department of Energy. Once that performance agreement is in place, they complete the project. Or in the case of planning grants, they would complete the planning of the project. We would go through a review process once the project is completed, which would include onsite inspections for construction grants. And if the onsite inspection, final review, meet all of the requirements within the performance agreement, then we would make the grant payment. And it's very similar for planning grants, except that we would not have the onsite inspection. And with that, I will pass it back over to Wendy.
Thanks, Rob. So I think as Rob said, the process that we came up with in the program design, working together with the advisory committee, is very closely reflected in the rules. But just a few words about what the draft rules include. There are definitions, many of those definitions are taken straight from the bill, but there are a few in addition. The program process is largely reflected in the structure of the rules, starting with opportunity announcements. And then there's essentially two parallel streams in the rules for the planning grants and the project development grants. So for each of those, there is a stream that starts at the application, then eligibility and completeness review, competitive review, the performance agreement stage. And then we also have some language around amending a performance agreement or things like extending a deadline or if there's some changes to the actual renewable energy project that need to be reflected in the performance agreement. There's some language around compliance and inspections by ODO. And then we also have some language in its own separate section of the rules around equity metrics. Equity metrics were mentioned in the bill as being a component that ODO is required to develop in coordination with the Environmental Justice Task Force. So I think that concludes my remarks just on the draft rules. If you want to go to the next slide, Rob. And I will talk a little bit about this formal rulemaking process. So this, right now, is the time and place that is set for the public rulemaking hearing. The purpose is to take public comments on the proposed permanent rules, which would establish the Community Renewable Energy Grant Program, which is created by Sections 29 to 32 of House Bill 2021, adopted by the 2021 legislature. The filing caption for this rulemaking is "Establishing Community Renewable Energy Project Grant Program Under House Bill 2021 from 2021." Notice for today's hearing was filed with the Oregon Secretary of State on December 22, 2021, and was published in the January 2022 Oregon Bulletin. And forgive me, I've got two screens, so if it looks a little funny, like I'm looking off to the side, I'm just looking at my other screen, see if I can make it look a little bit better. So this hearing will be, whoop, sorry, that's not better, will be conducted according to the Oregon Administrative Procedures Act, ORS Chapter 183, and the Attorney General's Model Rules. In addition to the opportunity to present oral comments at this hearing, anyone may submit written comments through the Comment Portal, which may be accessed via the ODO webpage for the Community Renewable Energy Grant Program. Or comments may also be sent to me by email, which is wendy.simons@energy.oregon.gov. And my email address and the Comment Portal address, again, are on our rulemaking page. If you go to the Community Renewable Energy Grant Program page, there should be a link for the rulemaking page. Or if you come in through the ODO rulemaking part of our website, you should also be able to find it. If you are having any issues finding any of those addresses to submit comments, please let us know. And it looks like Kristi is also posting it in the chat. So then you can use, sorry, go ahead, Kristi.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to mention, we had a question in the chat about sharing the slide deck. Did you, generally speaking, we put these online after a meeting or sometimes before a meeting, but we'll post it online at that rulemaking page, right? Would that be where people can?
Yeah, we can do that for sure.
Great, so that first link that I just put in is where I think you'll be able to find the slide deck for this afterwards. And then also, when we get to the part of asking people for comment, our person who's gonna be muting everybody and kind of making sure we get through the list would prefer hands raised, I had a different idea that I shared with Wendy. So I'm just telling Wendy to listen to me, listen to the other person and do hands raised.
Great, thanks Kristi. It takes a village sometimes to make one of these hearings run, especially when we have a lot of people that are interested in the program, which we're very excited about. So just to finish up my general introductory comments and making sure everyone knows how the rulemaking process is going to work. So we've got, okay, I shared some information about where the, how you connect with the Comment Portal. And in terms of deadlines, comments will be accepted until the close of business, 5:00 PM on Friday of this week. So you have about two and a half more days to submit your comments. So that's Friday, January 28, 2022. And that is the official close of the public comment period. No other comments or exhibits will be accepted after this date unless the Oregon Department of Energy decides to extend the public comment period for everyone. After the close of the public comment period, ODO will review any issues that were raised by public comments and prepare a hearing officer's report. We generally post public comments on our website so that people can see them. And I believe if you've used the public comment portal and signed into it, you can see all of the other comments that people have given about our rules. So we'll make the comments public. And then Oregon Department of Energy will then make the ultimate decision about any changes to the rules. So at this time, I would like to kind of go around the virtual room and briefly introduce the ODO staff, first who are on the line. And then, I'm not sure if we should go through all of the 34 attendees. I know we've had people introduce themselves in chat, so I think we'll just, sorry? Okay, we'll introduce the ODO staff real briefly. And then, at that point, if people could please raise your hand if you would like to offer, like to offer comments. So again, my name is Wendy Simons, I'm rulemaking coordinator and I work in our Planning and Innovation Division and I'm the hearing officer for today. So I know Kristi, would you like to go next?
Sure, I'm Kristi Split, I'm our Government Relations Coordinator and I'll be monitoring the chat and breaking in with just little notes, as you already saw me do once before, including, I think, that the introductions, if you didn't get a chance to put your name and the organization you work for in the chat yet, a good reminder to do that, but with 34 folks on the line, we won't go around and do a round of video introductions, but if you want to provide comment, yeah, thanks for raising your hand.
So I see Rob next, you've already heard from Rob, but Rob, if you just want to say briefly who you are?
Sure, Rob Del Mar, Senior Policy Analyst. And I will be involved in some of the technical aspects of program implementation as this program rolls out.
So, Pandian, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, hello, I'm Pandian Krishnaswamy. I'll be the Energy Incendies Manager managing and helping administer this program at ODO. Thanks.
Kathy Conley, did you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Kathy Conley, Central Services Assistant Director, and I'll oversee this at a higher level, thanks.
Thanks Kathy. And James?
Yes, James Kogle, I'll be working on a community renewable energy project when it goes live.
So James, a rulemaking coordinator, so any future rulemakings for this program will likely be headed up by James. I think certainly not least, Stacy, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Stacy Heberger, I'm helping facilitate the meeting today. And if you have any issues, go ahead and chat me in the chat box, thank you.
Great, thanks Stacy. Okay, so I think at this point, our preference, is there any issue with people hearing me?
You might try turning your screen off, it's a little jerky, Wendy.
Okay, I'll stop my video. Is that helping?
Sounds good.
Great, so my apologies for that. So at this point, if people would like to offer comments, spoken comments on the rules, if you could please raise your hand or somehow make yourself known to Stacy or Kristi. The floor is yours, so Kristi or Stacy, do you have anybody who's indicated they want to offer comments?
I don't see any hands raised quite yet, Wendy.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, please raise your hand, we would love to hear from you. And just a reminder, if you are thinking about comments but you haven't solidified them yet or are still working on them, you still have an opportunity to get those comments to us by Friday at 5:00 PM. So it looks like we may have one hand raised.
We do, we have someone on the phone.
Great.
Good morning, my, good morning, my name is Alex Shea and I'm with Carbon Solutions Northwest in Portland. And I don't have a comment as much as I have a question. I'm wondering if you have any idea or if you can offer any information as to, A, when we might expect the first grant opportunity to open, and B, the quantity of funds that might be available during that first, that first round of grants. And I'm happy to listen to your comments muted again.
Great, thanks. I think Rob or Pandian, would one of you like to field that question?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that question. And Wendy, just so you know, you're breaking up again. If we need to, we can pass the MC duties off to Kristi or I, maybe.
Okay.
If that needs to happen. But our intention is to open up the opportunity announcements this March. And again, we'll have four opportunity announcements for the two categories of planning and two categories of construction. We don't have a specific budget allocation established for this opportunity announcement yet. And one thing we need to do is learn from this first process to see what the, what the demand looks like. But the way that the funding works for this program, it's a total of $50 million, but we get it in two different batches for two bienniums. So right now we have approximately $25 million to get us through the next two years and which, at which time it'll be refunded. And so we will continue to be offering funds through the next two biennium. But with the idea that we want to get funds out the door as quickly as possible because we have a lot of administrative responsibilities for the program all the way through the final payment of grants. And so we need to try to get that wrapped up within the, the four years of the program.
Great. We also had a question in the chat and it's one that I think I can handle. It's from Janay. She's wondering why nonprofits aren't eligible, only government entities. And this was a decision that was made by legislators, they're the ones who passed the bill, of course. But to, to really help to foster partnerships between local governments, tribes, special districts, irrigation districts and their communities. So there's a lot built into the process we anticipate in the bill itself to encourage those sorts of partnerships between community organizations and the local governments. The other, the other reason is that, that that with local governments and irrigation districts and sort of other public entities, it limits the number of possible applicants. So there's also the need to keep admin costs low. And so we felt, I think that decision makers felt like this was a way to keep the program, which we think is one that, you know, could someday continue, but to sort of pilot it and see how it goes with this group. And then we could talk about going out to perhaps in the future, the private sector or nonprofit. So just know that that I think is why they limited the number of possible applicants for this new program.
Thanks, Christie. That was really helpful, I think, at least. Please let us know if you still have questions or if there are other related questions. Is there anyone else who is interested in offering a comment? It looks like Ray Sanchez Peskador has his hand raised.
Ray, you're on.
Sanchez Peskador from Solarized Rogue in Southern Oregon. And I had a question about your six month clock as I was reading in the, in the document for essentially ensuring that the project is either planned or developed. And I was thinking about, as I'm sure you're familiar, the Oregon Community Solar Program has been going on, started in 2020. Many of the planning and development timelines for that particular program is, are going on two years and we only have about 10% of the projects completed that have applied. So I'm trying to understand your rationale for thinking about six months being sufficient for an entity to fully plan or fully develop a project within six months, given the current environment in the IOU territory.
Thanks, Ray. Is that a question for Rob?
I'm, I'm happy to field it. And I think that Wendy and James are probably a little more familiar with the precise rule language. But I think there may be just a, a misunderstanding for the, for the timelines for the construction grants. We have a, I believe it's a three year development timeline. And for the planning grants, we have a one year development timeline. So it may be that the six months was related to our process for making the, you know, from opportunity announcements to the grant awards or something like that. But starting from the time that the, that the successful applicant gets that performance agreement, that will start a three year clock with the possibility of an extension for construction projects and a one year clock with a possibility of extension for planning projects. Did I get that right, Wendy or James?
I'm going to have to go back and double check if James is able to look at, pull up the rules and look at the detailed language right now. But we appreciate the comment, certainly, Ray, and we will, we will take a close look at the rules and all of those timeframes again.
I don't see other hands raised or anyone else in the chat with any questions or comments at this point. Angela Crowley Cook just raised her hand. So Angela, you're on.
Angela Crowley Cook, Executive Director of the CF. I would love to hear the answer to that question as well because we had some confusion about the timing when reading this as well. And it did look like it was six months for a planning grant and only one year for a development grant. So it'd be great to have some clarity on that particular issue. Oh, yeah, let's see. I, I just found, it looks like on page 10, for little A, big B, says will be completed within six months of execution of the performance agreement.
I just, I just looked in the bill and that is the language right out of the bill for planning grants. It's six months, not a year. And I'm reading down the bill. I think it might be one year for construction grants, but also with a provision to extend. And we had a lot of discussion with the advisory committee about, you know, serious issues with projects getting completed on time in the current environment of, you know, delays and materials and that sort of thing. So we did go straight with the, with the language in the bill. And I see for construction grants, it says, we'll begin construction within 12 months of the performance agreement and be completed within 36 months. So that's the language out of the bill for the construction projects.
I see.
The three years and six months respectively for construction and planning.
Okay, so just the only one thing I would add to that is that the bill did require ODO to include language in the rules around plus, I think of the language in the bill was something about good cause for an extension. So we did include some rules and possibilities for extension. So I would encourage you to maybe read those deadlines closely and, and the parts around extension of, of deadlines and see if you think there's anything that you would suggest related to that. Especially those of you who, who work closely with developing projects. So we, we appreciate your close reading of, of the rules.
We can go back and make sure that our rules as drafted match the intent and what's in the bill. Since there's different readings happening. One thing that I'll flag too is in the conversations about the bill itself, it was actually the Department of Energy that actually first raised concerns about what we thought were shorter timelines. So we understand the concern and we want to make sure that we do our best to, to honor it. So thanks for flagging that. We, we know, we know that's an issue.
Yeah, thank you. Did Ray and Angela, it looks like you're, I'm not sure if we're able to lower your hands, maybe send a chat if you have additional comments or please let us know.
I think Ray's back again because his hand went down for.
Ray's back again? Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Oh, Angela has more comments too. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Yeah, I, I think that you guys have a great source of data. If you take a look at what has happened over the last two years with the Oregon Community Solar Program in IOU territories, you can have an exact determination. There are 34 projects going on currently in that program. And you, most of them, as I said, are still in the planning phase. And so for a variety of reasons, you know, negotiations with interconnection and all sorts of things. And so perhaps reaching out to the folks who run the Oregon Community Solar Program at, at the ETO might be useful for you guys to get some data and see how long it actually takes these projects to get through the process of planning.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Sounds like it's my turn again. Okay, yeah, I have a bunch of comments in addition to that one. So just to, first of all, to add on to what Ray was saying. Yes, planning often takes, well, I would say usually takes years for projects that are on the larger side, like a, a larger community solar project or a utility scale project. And so that is a, is a pretty tight timeline. In terms of extensions, let's see, on number 14 on page five has a, a good cause section for extending a timeline. And I'm wondering if we can think about other wording instead of good cause. Because sometimes you need an extension and it's, it's not due to completely unforeseeable circumstances, but something that you reasonably didn't expect. So for example, most often delays are caused by the study process that utilities go through. And one can reasonably expect that those studies would be completed on a certain timeline and then they might not be completed by then. And so I'm wondering if we can change good cause to something like reasonable instead. The term reasonable is defined in something that the PUC uses in, in different parts of their regulations. And it needs, quote, "an eventual circumstance that the grantee at the time of deadline is established could not have reasonably anticipated and was not reasonably, within reasonable control of the grantee." So that makes it a little more flexible what that extension could be for. The way it reads now kind of sound, I think we're all in like a COVID mindset that this would be like if the governor would shut down the state or something. But there are other, I think, better ways to, to allow folks to get an extension. And then the, I mean, the thing with the, the planning grants, like Ray said, that's six months is really short and realize that's in the statute and there's not a lot we can do about that. What that means though is that really the only entities that can probably take advantage of that planning grant are projects that have already started the planning process. And so then when it gets to the part about consultations, there seemed like a lot of consultations for planning. And I think if my memory serves me right, a lot of those were in the statute itself. So I guess the suggestion is that if we can stick, when it comes to consulting for a planning grant, we can stick to only what was in the statute and not have any extra ones, any extra consultations because every consultation you add on makes it more unlikely that you can actually finish within that timeframe. And then I want to take a comment about the opportunity announcements. I assume that those announcements are informed by the rules. But is there, would there be a case where an announcement would have new information or new criteria that wouldn't be included in the rules? I guess I'll just pause there to, to understand that a little bit more. But I do have another question before you mute me again.
Could you say that again, Angela?
Yeah.
I'm not sure you completely understand your question.
Okay, so in the, let's see, about page three on here, I'm having troubles with my PDF file.
Your question is about?
Opportunity announcements.
Yeah, but about additional components that aren't in the rules?
Right. So it's kind of unclear to me. In those opportunity announcements, will, will they be based solely on the rules that, that will be adopted from this public comment period? Or would there be other criteria added or other new things added down the road without a rulemaking process? What, just wondering if those, if there's a chance those would be different for some reason, we would want the chance to have comments.
I can address this one at, at one level and Wendy may have a more complete answer. But with the opportunity announcements, we also plan to have the, the scoring matrix for how these projects will be competitively reviewed. And that scoring matrix will be based on what we have in the rules. But we wanted the flexibility to look at the, the weighting of certain criteria from one opportunity announcement to the next, to see if we needed to change scoring to enable certain types of projects to compete in future rounds. But, but all of the criteria that are going to be scored will be within the, within the rules and we'll always publish the scoring matrix with the opportunity announcements so that applicants know how they'll be able to, you know, compete within the review.
Okay, that is exactly what I was wondering about. And it would be helpful if there'd be a chance to provide comment or to have the advisory committee at the very least review that scoring matrix and have the ability to give stakeholder feedback. Because that's obviously going to be a pretty important piece of this.
You are ahead of your, ahead of us, Angela. We, we actually have this on our agenda for the advisory committee meeting this Friday. And so the advisory committee will be reviewing our draft scoring matrix this week.
Okay, but unfortunately it sounds like that's, if public comments are due the 28th, then there isn't any chance for public comments on that criteria?
Those aren't in rule. The scoring is the scoring piece. So the comment period is for the rules and this is separate.
That's right. Yeah, the scoring matrix is outside of the rules and it'll be associated with the opportunity announcements.
Well, so I guess if there's, if there's a possibility for stakeholder feedback that are folks not on the advisory committee, that would be appreciated. And then before I lose my, my mic here, I wanted to note that in the planning grant section on page nine, electric utilities are not defined. And maybe that was intentional because I believe this grant can be used by any, any type of electric utility in the state. But just wanted to note that, of course, since we have different types of electric utilities. And I don't know if it would be helpful to define it further or not. And I think that is all my comments.
That's a really good point, Angela, and it's actually only open to consumer owned utilities. The investor owned are not counted as public bodies or called out specifically in the bill. So if, if we need to clean that up a little bit within the, the rule language, we'll do that. So that's very helpful. And regarding the opportunity to comment on the scoring matrix, the advisory committee meetings are also public meetings. And we always have a public comment period at the end of those meetings. And so if you would like to, you know, have a look at what we're proposing, you're welcome to join the, the public meeting this Friday from 10 to noon, where we'll be going over the scoring matrix. And it's very much in its draft form right now. We're anxious to get feedback and would certainly welcome any thoughts you have on that.
I just posted a link to the advisory committee page and the materials are already posted on that site too. So you can take a look at them and reach out to me and I'd be happy to make sure the advisory committee and staff see them.
Okay, that's good. Will there, will there be any, any other chance to submit comments? Since I run a member based organization, I'd like to take the criteria back to my members and have them reflect on it. So do I have to kind of only give comments in a moment or will there be an opportunity to send some in after Friday?
Oh, that's what I was suggesting by, you can email me. I'll put my email address in for everybody too. But you can email me and it doesn't need to be by Friday. We're still working. It's an early draft and we'll be integrating feedback from Friday and working toward ideally opening the program still over a month away. So.
Got it. Thank you. But I have one more question now based on something that Rob said. No, the just a clarification. So so it looks like in the planning grant, the application has to be drafted and called on consultation with non-IU utilities. But then can a planning grant still be for a project in investor-owned utility territory? Or in the planning grant? Okay.
Yeah, just that the utility would not be the applicant in an investor-owned utility service territory. It would have to be one of those public entities like a municipality or, you know, irrigation district, something like that. But the bill actually requires that all projects have consultation with their local utility, whatever utility that is. There's just a special call out in the bill that consumer-owned utilities, all consumer-owned utilities are eligible applicants. And that's meaningful because under the definition of public body, munis would have already been eligible. And I think PUDs probably also fit that public body description, but this opens it up to the co-ops. So, yeah, basically, it just a just a distinction between who's an eligible applicant. But utilities will have to be consulted in all applications.
I see. So then in the planning grant, so it's like 1B, when it says an application must be drafted in consultation with electric utilities, that means any electric utility, including an investor-owned. Okay, so yeah, I think it would be good to define electric utilities since it means different things in different sections of the rules.
Thanks, Angela. Yeah, I'll jump in here just briefly. This is Wendy. I know that we do have a definition of electric utilities, I believe, in the definitions for the the rules, but but thank you. I know that there are a lot of these different definitions, so we will double-check any kind of cross references and and definitions that we have just to make sure. And as Rob mentioned, the the bill does require the applicants to consult with the electric utility that serves any customers that would also be kind of part of the you served by the the projects that's in the application. So we've got these multiple layers of who's eligible to apply and who serves customers, et cetera. So we'll we will just do another close check of all of those definitions as they apply to different aspects of the the rules and the bill. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you.
Lori Hutchinson has her hand raised for to make the next comment. Lori, you're on. Lori, you're off mute if you want to make your comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to underscore the very good comments that Ray made about seeking some feedback from the Community Solar Program on timelines for planning. And I can just sort of given us an example from a typical utility. The Pacific Corps now has a cluster process, so if you have an opportunity announcement in March, a project may put in for that cluster announcement in April. They might have a result in November and that result may or may not, you know, though the utility will be evaluating that particular project along with many other projects. But it may be even typically up to a couple of years after that until you see who else drops or does not drop out of the queue till you see how feasible your project is. And so as much flexibility as you can bake into the process under your rules, I think will be necessary just given the utility environment that we're in. And then, you know, it's a it's a bit the Wild West, you know, some PUDs and co-ops really vary in their involvement in in these sort of projects. And so some of them are nimble and ready to go. And some of them may be looking at this for the first time, something like this for the first time. So yeah, just underlining and putting an exclamation point next to the these projects are going to need a lot of flexibility in the planning process. Most everything is feasible if you have persistence, but it will take time.
Thanks, Lori.
Do we have anyone else? It looks like Ray might have his hand up again.
Sorry. Yeah, I read in there in the document some language regarding ODOE's ability to to recover the grant funds in some circumstances. And I wonder if you could explain expand a little bit of what those types of circumstances might be. And I can think of an example where a project, a small project goes through the planning phase and all of the and and the grant money is awarded only to start going into construction and then something happens that is completely out of control of the project that essentially makes the project non-financially viable or whatever, and the project is canceled before it gets constructed. And so if money's already been spent, how is the how is the entity, the the applicant expected to then refund those monies back to ODOE? I'm just trying to understand how this would work. Thank you.
I'm happy to take this one if if no one else wants to jump in. The the clawback provision will be related to the requirements set out in the performance agreement. And so your example of a planning grant, so long as the planning that was proposed is completed, there would be no clawback of funds, even if the planning determines that the project is not feasible. And if that project is feasible and they move into construction, that is a whole new round of potential funding. They could come back to the program for a construction grant, in which case if the project was not completed, the construction grant would not be paid, or if there were prepayments that could be clawed back. But there would be no clawback of planning funds related to the construction of a project. They are for the planning components only, and that'll be reflected in the performance agreement. And they'll be different potentially for each project because the performance agreement will be based on the essentially what is laid out in the application as the intention for the project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Do we have any additional comments or anyone who would like to offer comments before we wrap it up? We're almost at an hour. So we're, again, very thankful for everybody who's joined with us today.
I'm going to go ahead and put in the chat the information to we have two more people that just raised their hands, but I'll put up some information for people to submit written comments to due to by Friday. Ryan S., you are off mute.
This is Ryan Karami.
Go ahead. Ryan, but we can hear you.
Okay, I I just want I read the rules and I didn't see this anywhere in there, but I I just thought I'd make a comment. I don't see if there's any restriction on a project developer starting to use its own monies to purchase equipment or even begin constructing a project even before a potential incentive is awarded. But I just bring it up because the REAP grant program has that catch to it where you can't even start on your project while you have an application in or you can't use the funding for that. And I think that just given the timelines and, you know, like right now, a transformer is a fifty-week lead time. I've just just to state that I I think that if a project wants to start spending money and they're hoping for an incentive, but if they get it later, there wouldn't be any restrictions on the use of that fund because they started building the project early. It'd be nice to make sure that that's safe for them to do.
Does anyone know the answer to that? I've never heard us talk about that prohibition on starting the project, so I don't think we have that.
Okay, thanks, because a lot of us would be, you know, that have shovel-ready projects or pulling all the finances together and and the the grant or the incentive from a program like this would be super helpful, but we may still try to build the project anyway and just we'd want to get going on that. So, thank you.
I don't know if Wendy has thoughts on that for specific rule language, but Wendy, do you have any any comments before I I I have one one thought about it that I wanted to share, but?
Well, I think that certainly I'd need to look a little bit more detail at the bill with this question in mind, just to see what it says. I I know, just having worked a little bit with some of the USDA REAP funding. And I know that various programs with certainly USDA and others have their own requirements on on this question, so we'll look at that pretty closely. Ryan, thanks for bringing up the issue. So I think Rob may have some experience with some previous ODO programs such as the RED grants, and I don't know if that will inform part of what Rob has to to say.
Yeah, I was going to bring up the previous programs and I think what you said, Wendy, about scouring the bill a little more closely for a definitive answer is is right for this question, but this program is a little different from previous programs where previous programs were kind of about market transformation and supporting a technology. And this program is a little different in that it's really about kind of some supporting communities. And it's it's a it's a subtle difference, but it means that this this program doesn't have to demonstrate that it was the sole reason a project moves forward. It's there to to support these community projects and that subtle difference may mean that, you know, projects can be in some some level of of construction throughout the process. But like Wendy said, we'll we'll have a closer look in the rules and or and the statute.
Well, I think we we did also think a little bit as we were writing the rules that we could have a situation where a community or one of the entities who's an applicant, eligible applicant, had installed solar PV already, but we're looking to add storage to add resiliency and that that would be a situation where there's a project that's combining the two. And so part of the project, in a sense, had happened earlier, but then more equipment would be added to to the energy pro energy, I guess, what facility, I'm struggling for the right word here, but the combination of of solar and storage. So thank you for bringing that that question up, Ray, and we will, like Rob said, kind of scour the the bill and the rules more closely with that question in mind.
Thank you.
And next up is Spencer Meeks. And Spencer, you are off mute.
Gosh, thank you. Can you hear me? Hey, I had a probably a pretty quick one and again, happy to follow up outside this meeting too, but I was curious to know if you have any thoughts about how you plan on structuring outreach to build awareness for these funds and this ongoing project. Given that the grants are going to be open, it seems to be in the March timeframe. It seems to me like that would be something better to do sooner than later. Or is it that you're beginning that outreach in March once these funds become available for applications?
Really great question. And I actually met Spencer at the Oregon Solar Energy Conference and he was already thinking about outreach and shared some some good thoughts on this topic. So we have been doing the type of outreach that ODO is kind of traditionally good at, reaching out to utility managers, reaching out to representatives from municipalities and counties. But this is one area where we we need help and we've been working with the advisory committee to help kind of sort out how we get the outreach to the communities that most need it and are most traditionally underserved. And so it's a work in progress. We plan to have outreach running continuously throughout the entire program. And we want to start it as soon as possible. And I think we'll learn a lot from this first opportunity announcement to see how we can get the word spread to the the communities that most need it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Spencer.
One of the things that keeps me up at night, Spencer, making sure we do a good job of that. So we did have a question in the comment from Janes Reyes, who wanted to know if it was possible to provide captions and highlights from this meeting. Just so you know, we'll have to do a public a hearing officer report as part of our rulemaking process. Wendy will pull that together. And that's something that we'll publish online on the Community Renewable Energy Program Rulemaking page. I shared the link higher up in the comments, but you can also easily find it on our website. Thanks for the question. I don't see any of their hands up at this point.
No, I don't either.
They do like to come up as soon as we say that, though, so.
So we'll give it another minute or two. We're really glad to get all of this engagement and close reading of of the rules, especially when we have a new program like this and we're creating all brand-new rules. We really need to get a lot of eyes on them. So just maybe a couple of quick reminders. I have a few closing remarks and if anybody else thinks of a comment in the meantime, please go or please raise your hand. So we want to thank everybody for attending. Written testimony again will be accepted until the close of business, 5:00 PM on Friday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. No other comments or exhibits will be accepted after this date unless ODO decides to extend the public comment period, excuse me, for everyone. We will review all comments and summarize them in the Hearing Officer's Report. The Oregon Department of Energy will make the ultimate decision regarding what is in the the permanent rules. And we plan to file the permanent rules in February next month. And the rules will be effective upon filing and we will issue the first opportunity announcement shortly afterward. And as Rob had mentioned, our plans were to do that in March. I don't, I think Ray had one more question about in the chat about priorities and the opportunity announcement. I don't know if there's anything that you want to say about priorities and the opportunity announcement, Rob or Christie, anything that we would add about about that at this time, or is that a topic for this Friday's Advisory Committee meeting?
That's how I see it, yeah. That we'll have more information on that as we develop the the scoring matrix.
And also part of the reason we don't put all those details in the rule is so we can be responsive to situations as they arise. And we have two more questions that I saw in the comments. One from Ray and one from Angela. I'll start with Angela's because she's first. She wants to know if leased systems are eligible for funds?
I will look more closely at the bill. I know I was looking very closely the other day about ownership of the systems. And I believe that the the language in the bill is very clear about benefits, what types of benefits and who benefits. But there's not a lot in the bill that I was spotting about ownership of the projects themselves. So it it as far as I saw in the bill, it didn't not say that, for instance, the the applicant had to own the energy systems, but they do have to benefit those communities that are named in the bill. So again, we will look at that very closely because I know other, at least one of the comments we received on the comment portal did also mention something about ownership of of the systems. So thanks for raising that, Angela.
And I think that maybe you got Ray's question. I just didn't hear the whole question, but it was about favoring smaller projects over larger ones. Is that the one you were talking about, Wendy, at first?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so yeah, that's something we'll be talking about at the advisory committee, which has a meeting Friday. I shared the link. It's open to the public. Public comment can be made. The materials are there and you're welcome to email me with thoughts. So even if you can't go, want to take a look at the materials and let us know what you're thinking, please feel free.
Is there anything else in the chat that you see? Or I'm not seeing any other? Or I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So if anybody has any process questions, bring them up at this point. But otherwise, I think we're getting ready to wrap up the hearing. The time that I see on my computer is 10:10. So without any other questions, I will conclude the hearing, close the hearing at 10:10. Thanks, everybody, for coming and for providing comments. And again, this concludes the public hearing. Thank you very much. So Stacy, I think, have you ended the recording, or you can end the recording now, I think?
Yeah, I will end the recording.